Good afternoon. We call to order the Bossier City Council meeting today, 3:00 PM, October the 4th, 2022. We'll have the call to order indication. Jeff Darby, Pledge of Allegiance, by Councilmember Vince Maggio, please stand. Holy Father, we thank you for your benefits that you daily loaded us with. We thank you, Father God, for the breadth of life, eternal life. We thank you, Lord God, for the blessings upon each of us. We ask, Lord, that you would continue to show us your grace and your mercy. Father, we pray for the Denzie family at this time of loss. We ask you, Lord God, to comfort day by day. Father, we ask for direction in the business of this city. We thank you for those who serve others. In the Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Follow me say the prayers, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery, absent. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record, and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion, with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you're asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council-appointed Sergeant-at-Arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
The Chair asks approval of the minutes of September 20th, 2022, regular council meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Any person would like to speak on this? Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Does it come up, counsel?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries. There's no changes to today's agenda?
Mr. President, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and second to approve the agenda. Anybody would like to comment on the agenda? Please cast your vote, counsel. And do we have?
Motion carries.
Any special guests or ceremonial matters today?
Not that I'm aware of. Bids, witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P22-06, the 2022 Citywide Street Rehabilitation Phase Two.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
We have bid openings today for the Street Ride, the 2022 Citywide Street Rehabilitation. There was one addendum, which included the bid meeting attendance and the list of potential streets to be part of, to possibly be addressed as part of the project. The estimate from the engineers is $1,100,000. Our first bid is from Dale's Paving, had a total of $775,500. They did, they do recognize the addend, the addendum, that's 775,500.00.
Is the bid bonding?
Bid bond in there?
They do have a cashier's check for the bid bond, yes. The second bid is from Ernest Contracting, and they did acknowledge the addenda. Their bid is $1,083,250. That's 1,083,250.00, and they do also have their bid bond. And the third bid is from RVP Construction, for a total of $674,777. They did acknowledge the addendum, and they do have their bid bond. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
My motion, we approve the reading of the bids. Second. We have a motion and second, counsel, please, cast your vote.
Comments?
Anyone would like to comment on those?
Motion carries.
Counsel, before we move to the next item, we have a pretty extensive agenda today, and I understand that maybe the Art Council Director is here, and if she would like to speak before the council, we would allow two minutes to speak.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
On yesterday afternoon.
If you wouldn't mind, give us your, your name, address.
My name is Brittany Pope, and my address for the record is 1038 Babylon Road in Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106.
Sure. Welcome to Bossier City.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. On yesterday afternoon, I was made aware that there would be some changes slightly in our way of operating. We currently handle the bookings for the plaza that is located directly across the street from us there in the East Bank District. Since 2018, we've handled the bookings, we've handled the marketing, we've created the identity of that plaza. We put programming there. We have applied for funding to have programming there, and I was notified on yesterday that that would be changing if there is a repeal to the ordinance 71. That would take the handling of the bookings to the city, and it would be a disruption also in our funding. We currently received an amount of $50,000 for our handling the booking and handling the plaza, the setup, any of the contact from individuals that actually book it. We are hands-on all over. That would dramatically impact us going forward if we no longer have that funding coming. Some of our long-term strategic planning that goes in line with our neighbors there in the East Bank is also dependent upon us handling the programming and handling the booking of that plaza. So today, I hope that you all will consider before your vote about the repealing of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pope.
Want a handout? Want those handouts?
Those are for us?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, could I ask her one question? When somebody books the plaza down there, is there a rate schedule?
Currently, yes, sir. If it is for profit, it's $250. If it is not for profit, it's $150, or it has been free.
Okay, and when they rent that, where does that, where does that money go?
It basically goes into the cleanup, the trash, anything that's needed for them to be in that space, any permits, all of it. That's where that money goes to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Public hearings, actions on unfinished business, adopt an ordinance to amend the 2022 Water and Sewer Fund Budgets, final reading?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Williams, and second, was it Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On this item, anyone would like to comment? Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to conduct a rate study for the Public Utilities Department at a cost of $32,569 to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund, final reading?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Have a motion, Mr. Smith, and a second made by Mr. Maggio. Discussion, counsel. The floor is open for comments on this item. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $100,000 from the 2017 Sales Tax Bond Fund, Innovation Drive Fund, towards a turn lane for Swan Lake Road at Innovation Drive, final reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and accepted by Mr. Free and a second by Mr. Maggio. Discussion, counsel. The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Honorable Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached franchise agreement with Centerpoint Energy Resources Corporation, doing business as Centerpoint Energy Louisiana Gas, final reading?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Discussion, debate. Comments? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve, adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached professional services agreement with Homeland Safety Systems LLC, final reading?
So moved. Second.
Wait, devotion?
Hi, Mr. Smith and Mr. Williams.
Motion accepted by Mr. Smith and second, Mr. Williams. Discussion. And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve report of change order six for the LTRI, Louisiana Technology Research Institute, Bossier, with an increase in project cost of $404,916.43 from the 2016 sales tax bond issue, final reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Williams and a second, Mr. Free. Discussion, counsel. Anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
I hit the wrong button. I was for that. I'm sorry. My computer keeps kind of flashing on and off.
Your actual PC is flashing on and off?
Yeah.
Okay, I will get a, I'll teach you what it's like. I'm sorry.
New business, please.
Introduce an ordinance to adopt the general fund budget for 2023, first reading?
Mr. President, as long, right now, the budget's still undergoing changes, so I'd like to make a motion to continue items one through 24.
Second.
Till, what's our next meeting, Paul?
October 18th.
It's October 18th.
So that's a motion to continue items one through 24 till October 18th?
Yeah.
My second, then.
Motion, Mr. Williams made and a seconded by Mr. Smith, right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
All right. End of discussion, counsel, on this. Anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing $25,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to support B. Bossier through the Bossier Chamber of Commerce, first reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Hammond made, received, and second, Mr. Maggio.
Yes, sir.
End of discussion. And I think we see Ms. Johnson in the audience. She's smiling. Anyone would like to comment on this item? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached professional services agreement with, and purchase agreement with Avaya, Aura, and Carousel Industries of North America, Inc., first reading?
So moved. Second.
I got some questions, Charles.
Exactly.
What is this? You know, I didn't see, I read through it. I didn't see a total contract amount.
There are two different contracts. One is for the purchase of certain hardware having to do with the telephone system. I think the last time it was upgraded was 2006.
That's correct.
If I'm not mistaken. And the second contract is, of course, a maintenance agreement. I'll let Mr. Bell speak to that.
The Avaya is the manufacturer of the phone system for City Hall. The Aura is the voice messaging system, you know, does our auto attendance, also does voicemail. The system was last upgraded in 2006. This is the main system that police and fire use in their dispatch centers, as well as other 911 equipment. Like I say, we've gotten 15 years out of it, and it's becoming end of life and unmaintenanceable. The money, capital money was approved in the 2022 capital budget we're currently in now.
How much is the, the first contract?
260, 261,000. It's on Louisiana State contract.
251?
Yes, sir.
And the, the maintenance agreement, how long would that last and how long does that?
The maintenance agreement's running approximately $56,000 a year. We're currently paying close to 50. It would increase about a little over 8,000 or 9,000 total. But this new contract also includes the software maintenance, which we had not, the software, they quit doing improvements to it because it was 15 years old. So that's one of the other reasons that we were doing an upgrade as well.
How long is that for?
Well, you do it in three-year contracts, billed monthly, and it is, it is budgeted. Thank you, Bill. And all these items on Louisiana State contract.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Williams made the motion, and I second it.
Yes, sir.
And open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Mr. Hammond, is your PC still flashing?
Yeah, there, there it goes.
Motion carries. We'll have it fixed before the next meeting.
No, you're fine. Thank you.
Introduce an ordinance to require the mayor and city administration to mark all city vehicles under Louisiana Revised Statute 49:121, identification of public property by January 1st, 2023, except those that are exempt by state law, and any vehicles found to be in noncompliance with this ordinance and state law after January 1st, 2023, be parked until those vehicles become compliant, and further that anyone in violation of this ordinance following that date be fined in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 49:123, first reading?
So moved. Second.
Rodney, do you have enough stickers for all these vehicles, the decals? Okay, that's all. Because we've had a couple people come talk to us about maybe, maybe being exempt from it. Something the council have to get together and talk about.
So the Chair received the motion by Mr. Smith and the second, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion, counsel? Anyone would like to comment on this item? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare the completion of the Bruce Street Force Main Project by Lawler Construction, Inc., including deductive change order number one in the amount of $3,360, and to amend ordinance 14 of 2022, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement fund sewer capital and contingency fund, first reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, second, Mr. Williams. Discussion. And the floor is open for comments. Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $10,000 from Fund 495, the 2015 LCDA Bond Fund, to purchase time clocks, first reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Maggio. Discussion.
Yeah, I actually have a question. I mean, is this for multiple time clocks for $10,000, or?
Yes, sir. It's going to be for four time clocks plus the annual maintenance.
Okay, I guess this is hooked up to a computer system.
They're, they're actually standalone units.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Comment from the public. Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $3,000, $3 million from the 2018 LCDA Bond Fund towards parking lot improvements, expansion at Tinsley Ballpark, first reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Williams and second, Mr. Maggio.
Yes, sir.
Discussion.
I think, where's Clinton? Clinton, do you want to come tell everybody, or have you talked to everybody? Just to let them know, I mean, we know Tinsley's doing well, so we need, already need some expansion.
And Coach and Louis might be a better to tell you exactly what's going on out there, but I know they're struggling right now for parking, and this right here would do, I include a little map with the, with the fact sheet. If you look, it's the green and light, the green and dark blue areas, a little over, close to 300 spots, I believe. We're going to be adding to the, to the west of, in between the old fields and the new fields right there, and it'll actually connect the existing soccer to the new cul-de-sac that was just built. It also will include nine bus spots for travel teams that come in, or school buses, school teams that come in to use it, as well as an additional nine V, rentable RV spots.
I think, what we heard, I think, Clay or Louis, they'll have everything booked next year for 38 weekends of the year? That's pretty good. Why you say Clay and Louis?
Yes, sir. Coming up this, uh, next year, we got 38 weekends already booked, and more are being booked now. I don't know if y'all have had a chance to come out on Saturdays or Monday nights to the facility now, with soccer and football going on. It's a madhouse. I mean, traffic backed up on 80, turning on Tinsley. People have not quite adjusted to being able to go the back way, ballpark drive out, or go east. They all seem to want to follow out and go out Tinsley or come in Tinsley. And it takes a while to get in and get out when teams are changing. And by that, I mean, soccer, you got 1,100 people, 1,100 little kids playing. You got moms, dads, grandparents, everybody showing up over there on that side. Football, you got 900 filling up the other side. All this is in the parking area that we have now. If we could expand on what they've proposing on this, this not only fills, accommodates AV parking, that puts the other nine into play. It also gets buses where these teams come in to play tournament balls. And to be honest, we, this is something that's solely needed out there. We just don't have enough places for people to park and go watch your kids play.
I know you remember this, but when I was out there with my grandkids, years ago, we built the parking lot. It was still in my house.
Yes, sir. Very much so. It's gotten worse now. How many ball fields you paint on soccer 14?
Yes, sir.
He paints 14 soccer fields on the soccer fields. I'm talking about little fields to accommodate little kids playing now.
We just added 47 parking spots this calendar year, and that gives us a total of 323 at soccer. My grandson plays soccer out there. I'll be out there tonight. If you play at 7 o'clock, I had to park almost up to animal control and walk all the way down because there's not enough room. If we add the additional parking, it will accommodate us to open those gates and possibly send some out toward Old Menden Road. Of course, we'd have to open up and have some security there to get them out the new ballpark drive, but at least it's another avenue to exit the masses that they could leave so the incoming could find a place to park.
You know, we talked about one time behind the football fields, I think there's ditches there, whoever owned that. I mean, may start trying to figure it out because this probably going to need some more in the future.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You're correct, sir.
Because it's going to be full.
I, I got a couple of questions on this. I'm, I'm not going to dispute with y'all that y'all need parking. I got numerous calls about this when people saw it on the agenda, and I went, I went there last night to see firsthand for myself, and I had friends that were playing soccer, and I, I too had to park almost down where, by, by the dump where you go and, and walk up there. I understand that, need that. The RV spots, how, how much do those rent for?
$50 a day.
50 a day? And that's full hookups, water?
Yes, sir.
Sewer, everything? All right.
When we looked into that, sir, that was the going rate at the RV parks. So we, that's how we came up with 50.
And those, I know, I know travel ball uses RV spots a lot just because they, it gets expensive traveling for baseball, paying for hotel rooms and everything like that. One, one idea on, you know, just trying to, you know, produce a little bit more revenue going on out there. One of the biggest complaints that I get, call every week, multiple people, is that they're not allowed to rent the fields out there for practice during the week. They're taxpaying citizens of Bossier City. A lot of them have businesses. They play travel ball, and they, they would like to rent the, the fields. Are, are we not doing that?
Correct.
I, I look at everywhere else. I look at Ruston and all these other places that have facilities pretty much the same as us, and, and they rent during the week. To those, is there a reason why we don't?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, Mr. Hammond, I've, I've got pictures, or Mr. Carswell does, of some of the fields at Ruston High, as a result of them renting, where they've had to cut out and replace a lot of the turf at the home plates. If they use metal cleats, it's going to destroy them. Right now, our fields look almost as good as the day we received them back on January the 27th or 29th of this calendar year. Our argument to that is if we open those fields up and something gets destroyed or vandalized during the week that we have a big tournament, and our department can't get that fixed, the $25 or so an hour we may receive in rental isn't going to come close to what we lose if I have to cancel a weekend tournament, plus the economic impact of that weekend tournament. One tournament would lose everything that you accumulate throughout the whole calendar year. In addition to that, we also don't have the manpower to do it. We've, we've not been fully staffed in our department, but maybe three weeks this whole calendar year, so we've struggled to maintain employment to fill all of our current vacancies, which we still have one at this point. But between temporary fencing, just to give you some other ideas, so if we have a weekend tournament, we've had to set up, the other day, we had to set up four temporary outfield fencing. Well, our adult softball programs right now are playing on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Well, if it rains on Monday, I'm, we'll be out in the rain because we have got to get everything removed on that Monday so the adults can play on Tuesday. And pretty much the same thing on Friday. If it's pouring down or grass needs to be cut, those are things we have to do, just general maintenance things that have to be accomplished, to have it ready for the Saturday for a big tournament. So there's not a lot of time, excuse me, there's not a lot of time for us to turn it around and flip it from a tournament weekend to get the grass cut, the lines painted, bathrooms cleaned, anything that was torn up over the weekend to get repaired during the week in preparation for the following weekend. It, it's just an ongoing battle. And then where do you, where do you start and where do you stop? You've got a team, you've got a team, you've got a team. Now I'm out of fields. How do you prioritize that? I mean, there's just, there's more to it than just say we're going to open them up for renting, in my opinion. I'll, I'll be it very small opinion, but being in charge of maintenance for our department, there's more to it than just going out there and throwing a little crushed rubber on the home plate area and say, throw the ball out, we're ready to play. Anything they tear up, I have to have time. throw the ball out, we're ready to play. Anything they tear up, I have to have time to fix, repair, replace, and put it back in service for the upcoming weekend. So I go back to no matter what you generated on the the rental from the teams coming out there would not offset what you would lose on just one weekend. Super N I T, we had over a million dollar economic impact that one weekend. Don't take many of those and then we're we're in the hole and then I'm struggling to find a contractor to come in and make any repairs that we have to make.
Uh, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but you've got to understand where we come from, that we have taxpaying citizens that elected us that we hear from every single day on this.
Sir, I get that. I mean, I do.
So that that's where that's where we come from on this.
Yes, sir.
Well, you know that, uh, now, uh, Naggeton's opening up, now they're having trouble getting teams in because their turf down there has been torn up. Same way over to Sterlington.
So are the are the the fields getting torn up from spikes? Is that what?
And normal wear and tear.
Mainly just too much use.
Mr. President, um, I sympathize with Mr. Bohannon on, uh, his lack of being able to get enough employees throughout the year. It's a battle that most of y'all are aware of, that I've been fighting for on behalf of our city employees to see a significant pay raise given to them. Um, unfortunately, doesn't look like we're going to get that this year, but I, you know, I, uh, it's it's short term memory. I remember what happened last week when I made just a s- a small suggestion on doing things a little bit differently. Uh, and the 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 excuse from Parks and Rec and the administration was quality of life. And if we're going to spend, I think we already have close to thirteen million invested in Tinsley, another three million, so sixteen million of taxpayer money. Uh, I I agree, I have to say, I agree with Mr. Hammond's that, you know, there's municipalities, Ruston, Brobridge come to mind that are much smaller than us that make it happen, um, with ease. I mean, I can, someone told me about Ruston the other day. I got on my cell phone and within five minutes was able to book a field if I wanted to. Um, and, uh, it's it's a pretty quick, easy process. And so I I think that there is a way of moving forward. We could get a little creative so our taxpayers who are who own the fields um, can better utilize them.
I mean, you you and that's my part now. It's 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 easy to say that, you know, but like I said, you've got to have somebody out there where they they're throwing trash on the fields, where they're spitting sunflower seeds on the fields. You can't have sunflower seeds. Where there were, where metal spikes, then you have somebody try to enforce it and they're just going to be ramrodded. But, you know, we may try to, I mean, I pro- I could probably talk to Lily again, see if they want to make some money. I don't, you know, we we did it before, uh, and see if they maybe do it for, do it now.
Well, we we do have Dixie and Little League that do play, that have a place for people to practice, to play in the league that affordable for, uh, the average person to participate in. Versus, uh, this travel ball deal, you better be deep in a pocket to get your te- uh, child on a team. I mean, it's not a freebie like a hundred dollars, you can play Little League or Dixie. Hundred dollars won't get you on a travel team.
It's it's thousands, it's money. But I'll see if I can talk to Scott, Scotty and, uh, see if they want to open them up, maybe make some money, you know, for somebody else want to practice.
Yeah.
I know we've had the discussion before and it was a big no. They control the fields, so.
And those fields at Tinsley have never been practice fields, even from day one.
Yeah.
It's always been kept up to be game fields, and that's what we are there for. They have other sources, other places to go play, other places to practice.
Uh, I just.
We're going to bring in these people from out of town to our city to keep the flow going. We got to have a quality facility. We're looking to host a twenty four, uh, World Series out there. And if we got dog mats out there, you're not going to have a World Series.
Yes, sir. I I will, Mr. President, finish with this last comments. Uh, someone called me last week. Um, they have a travel ball team. Uh, they are currently, um, using Shreveport Little League's fields. Shreveport is graciously just giving them the fields as long as they rake it at when they're done. And so, but they want to come to Bossier. That they they live here, they they own businesses here, they work here, they want to play here, but they're they are spending money in Shreveport. Um, they're not paying for the fields, but there's gas, food afterwards to practice across the river. And I think we're, I I think not just in the twenty five dollars an hour we could charge them or whatever the dollar amount is. I don't know what the going rate on baseball fields are. But we're also missing the after practice dinners, gas and and things like that that have a real economic impact on the city of Bossier, so.
Again, I can say that I've been involved in this a long time. As I know, I played on, well, my 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 kids and grandkids have played in Shreveport Little League over there. I played on the fields over there.
Hmm. Oh, no, they're not nearly what Tinsley has, but they're.
Field out here is is better than that.
Oh, yeah, no doubt, but that's just a a place for them to practice and because they don't have a place here and so.
Coach, is it anywhere, any other fields they can practice? I mean, we can, they can, I know some guys will pay big money for practice fields.
Uh, we have a field at, uh, in behind, uh, Shady Road Rec Center back there.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have a field at Hoover Park. Uh, we got a small field at Mitchell that's, uh.
South Bossier Park's down at the police jury.
And then, uh, one like Mr. Williams's. There's fifteen fields down in South Bossier. Mr. Socia, the police jury is over. That, uh, they can go practice there.
No doubt we're, Chris, we're, we have a shortage of them. I mean, because there's a lot of, a lot of teams around here.
And we're not talking about just one team. You open it up, there's over a hundred travel ball teams in the area that are going to be knocking the door down.
That that sounds like a lot of money. That sounds like more employees.
We have no employees to cover it. You just can't unlock it, they'll go have a good time. That dog won't hunt. And, uh, when they form these teams, I would suggest they think about prepping where they're going to practice and all that. When you open a business, that you open your business? No idea where you're going? I mean, you're generating revenue. These guys are making money. Maybe they need to get together and buy them some land and build them a practice facility.
Chris, I I do know that we went, well, Bossier rents the field, their field out sometimes. Uh, I can't say it's every night.
Hmm.
On the nights they don't practice, they they do let people rent them out out there, so may contact the coach at Bossier.
Well, I I think we all need to, not all of us sit down, but some of us sit down, and I think we need to come up with a solution, with a solution on this. Um, it it's not going away. I mean, they these are taxpaying people in Bossier City and we hear from them, we hear from them regularly. And, um.
Big baseball city, you know, it's it's a big baseball city, Bossier.
I I've got one thing y'all y'all said that the Wallbrook Park fields, who who who's in charge of those?
Dixie, Dixie Baseball. We own them and we prep them, we maintain them, but Dixie, we've had a cooperative with Dixie Baseball Coach, I believe, since the fifties.
Oh, I I understand. I I played Dixie ball, my brother did.
Down there, yeah.
American Legion, I mean, he was our coach right here.
Yes, sir.
Um, I I under- I understand that, but.
And the Little League fields too.
Yeah, just still coming back from where we are today that, um, you know, when people come to us, we we've got to, we got to ask the hard questions and
Sure.
sometimes make people mad and, um, I I just think we need to sit down and, um, maybe sit down with some of these travel ball, um, teams, the the people, the the coaches, and see if we can't come up with a, um, with a solution on this to try to, try to appease everyone.
I did that about a year ago.
We've done that.
Who was with us in that anyway, but they they wanted a lot. I mean, it was, uh, and I had Warren Socia, the police jury director out there. He was, I invited him to that meeting too, and he told him, we got plenty of fields coming out there, so we need to use what we got, not just the city, but the parish also.
That's all I got. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you, Coach.
And I think the clerk, you identified Mr. Williams as making the motion.
Mr. Williams and Mr. Maggio.
Is second it. Okay. And the floor is open for any other comments.
Good afternoon. My name's Cade Garland. I live at six zero zero eight Coy Road in Bossier City, Louisiana. Um, appreciate the opportunity to speak today. So I'm here today to discuss the additional funding for Tinsley, the three million dollars in additional funding. And I I personally do not support appropriating any additional funds for Tinsley until all taxpayers have an equal opportunity to access those fields, right? You've mentioned, I met with you personally and you mentioned that
I saw yesterday, yeah, that was you.
Fields in South Bossier, um, that the police jury has, those fields have no lights, they have no fences, they have no mounds, no bases. And so it's more or less just a field. So, I mean, we could go practice in this field out here. But there's Little Leagues and there's Dixie ball players that are given fields and they have, they have access and the ability to to utilize fields to practice. So I just think that we're asking for equality for all Bossier City residents to be able to practice the sport that they love. Um, and then some clarity on it too, because there's a year-long endeavor agreement with Little League and Dixie that the league presidents have that they are allowed to dictate who can and cannot access those parks. And so outside of the league season, they can control who's out there and who's not there. Well, as a taxpayer, you know, at Wallbrook or at Clifford Almond Park, I should be able to go out to the park on a Saturday outside of a league season and practice. Well, multiple times we've been run off, said that we don't have access to be there, and I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's right. As a taxpaying citizen, you know, the the maintenance crews that cut the grass, you know, taxpayers pay their salaries for the equipment, for the lights, for the dirt. And so I just think it's, we need an equal opportunity to access the fields and that's what, uh, I would encourage you to to think about. So, thank you.
Let me clarify a couple of things.
Yeah.
And Louis, tell me if I'm wrong. Don't y'all cut the grass one time a week and then the other?
At least once, often twice.
Yeah. And but don't the Little League cut some of theirs?
They do some.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And and, you know, all the money they get for registration with Little League or or I I think Dixie League too, it goes back in the fields. You know, they 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 do the work in the fields. They they buy, you know, like Little League, we bought all the sod, we we brought in dirt and kind of, we had them leveled. Uh, you know, we bought the mounds, things like that. So I understand what you're saying. I understand the point. We just, you know, it's, they 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 act, don't own them, but they they control them.
So.
Because, you know, they play several seasons.
Right.
And by the time the second season's over with, you got to let the fields rest. You got to have let the grass rest, the dirt, you know.
For sure. I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So it's it's I I like to understand your point. We we just need more fields, I guess.
Right. To help with that, um, you know, Bruce Ard and Youngsville, there's several other municipalities in the state that have turf complexes similar to ours. And I I met with the mayor, Bruce Ard, and asked him a couple of questions a couple of months ago. Um, just in February of this year alone, they had four hundred and five field rentals just in February, not including the three tournaments that they hosted that weekend. So you take four hundred and five rentals times the fifty dollars that they charged per rental, it's additional twenty thousand dollars a month. And then through sponsorships that, you know, we go to all these parks across the country and and in our state, you see signage everywhere. The community would love to support this this complex and, you know, whenever, you know, you're hitting a home run, well, it went over the chick fly sign. You know, the community would support the park and there's additional funds that we could generate to pour in, to help with maintenance, to help with workers. And the community would gladly support. And, you know, on average annually over the past four years, when I asked the mayor down there, he said they're going to average two hundred thousand dollars annually on sponsorship. So you add the field rental revenue, the sponsorship revenue, and there's two really good additional revenue streams that, you know, we're currently missing out on. So, um, you know, I know they're really excited about booking the facilities for forty weekends. Um, if you're booked out for both Saturday and Sunday, that's five thousand dollars. So you take, you know, five thousand times the forty weekends and that's two hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, you could make just as much money, if not more, if you would rent the park out during the week and then offer sponsorships to the the local community. So thank you for your time. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. You you have something to say, sir? I think we had one more.
Well, and I was just going to add, you can lose all that in one weekend. I will say that. A lot of the travel ball teams are not from Bossier City. A lot of the participants are not from Bossier City. Getting back to Little League, Little League probably spent sixty thousand dollars this year on all the fields at Clifford Almond Park. They tore out the pitching area, they poured concrete, they put artificial turf down. They just put all new home plates down. So Little League, to his point, does have to control that park to a certain extent because that money came out of their pockets. The citizens didn't pay for that in Bossier City at Clifford Almond Park. Dixie also put in some turf home plates about three years ago, and already several of those have to be replaced. Because if you go out there unsupervised with metal cleats, they have destroyed, I know Field Six for sure, and I believe Field Five turf is gone. They put, they put up batting mats over those home plates. So they have to be supervised, whether it's Tinsley, Clifford Almond, you know, Wallbrook or Metta View, the parks have to be supervised. As Mr. Clay said, if you just turn it, turn the lights on and open the gates and walk away, you're not going to have facilities that people come from out of town that want to participate here, continue to come here if we don't maintain control and access of those parks. That's my last two cents, unless you all have any other questions.
I I do.
Yes, sir.
Since you came back up, I I've I've been thinking about some. I was going to let them go, but since you came back, um, so all the weekends that y'all say that are booked for for twenty twenty-three, are those that travel ball coming in on the weekends or what kind of tournaments are those?
Those are travel ball. They could be softball, baseball. We've, uh, I believe Mr. Carswell's even got a September eleventh military softball that's supposed to be coming in.
So tho- those people are coming in travel ball. And, you know, they're not all from here, but they're coming in, they're staying in hotel motels, they're eating out, they're buying gas, they're they're doing all that. So that kind of contradicts what you just said. Um, that travel ball, not, they don't all live here, they're coming in. I'm, 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 me personally, I would rather people come in from out of town.
I don't, I don't know where the contradiction is because I agree. We want the people to come in from out of town. We want to provide a complex and a facility that the out of town people continue to want to come to Bossier City.
But how do these people that play travel ball, so they, the ones that live here, what are they supposed to do that are paid to come play in tournaments out there? What are they supposed to do to practice so they can compete against these people that are coming in from out of town?
We do have other facilities, but I would question some of the people that have come. How many tournaments have they played in at Tinsley this year? That might be a question that needs to be asked. How many of the travel teams that are local are staying local and playing local? Hence the name travel ball. Most of them are practicing here and going to other facilities. And based on our location with I twenty and I forty-nine, we are drawing people from East Texas, South Arkansas, and all over the state of Louisiana. So there there are opportunities and possibilities from them for them to practice. They just might not be the most favorable ones. When we had Tinsley, when it was all dirt and nothing but grass, we didn't get calls to practice. The minute we spent and made the investment to generate outside income to come into the city, everybody wants to use the complex now. I understand that. But if you want to stay clean and pristine and have us the ability to generate additional mega income by having people come in from out of town and stay at the hotels, eat at the restaurants and visit the shopping centers, we've got to have opportunities to keep it clean, maintain it, and also provide opportunities for our B par adult softball program, unless we're going to eliminate that. And we have a pretty successful softball season as well. I don't know how you fit everybody into a calendar when there's not enough time.
It's impossible.
Well, we're talking about, you know, Little League and Dixie. Have we ever thought about just selling them the fields?
Councilman Hammond, that's above my pay grade. Uh, they do an awful lot. Those two organizations, as I've always understood it since I've been here, and you might look at my height and think I played football, I used to play basketball. I I know a lot about basketball. When I first came here, I didn't know much about baseball. Mr. Clay certainly educated me on that, on on just about everything. But those two organizations are for the kids like Lewis Cooked. It wasn't worth two cents playing, but they had an opportunity to play. Travel ball, I don't imagine they would have kept Lewis back in the day. And we need those because we are a recreational program. We need those opportunities for every kid. Not just those that can afford it or those that exceptionally excel at it, for every kid. And I think that's what Dixie and Little League offer.
Lewis, does, uh, does Halton, do they rent those fields out there for practice?
I'm unaware that they do. I know the Lawson Bowe Brandon Complex, they play. I don't know that they rent those. And I will say that the that that Dixie program out there does maintain the whole complex. But I I don't know that we want to do that. We have a good relationship with those programs. Our guys do a pretty good job getting the fields cut, edged. fields cut, edged, lines chalked and so forth, so I'm unaware that they rent those.
I, I agree with you on the field, on the Tinsley though, because the more use, this is like the dirt fields, the more use, the more they're gonna get tore up.
Bermuda grass only should have about twenty to twenty-five hours of play on it a week. Otherwise, you're right, it, it gets to dirt, and then it gets to where it's unplayable, it's unsafe, which brings up another thing, like I said, I wish I'd, maybe I can get Kenny to print some of that, some of the scenes that he saw where they'd already cut out at the rusting complex. You know, liability is always an issue. You open the door, you open the gate, you turn the lights on, and you turn your back, do these teams have insurance? Have these teams listed the city of Bossier City as an additional insured on their insurance policy? Do they have the coverage that we require? And when somebody gets hurt, is the city gonna be held liable? That's a question for Mr. Jacobs, but I, I suspect we would be. We might be regardless, but at least if there's an insurance policy where we're listed as an additional, an insured, the exposure would be significantly less.
Well, I mean, we're, we're exposed everywhere in the city that's public property.
Understand.
I mean...
Yes, sir.
That, that, I mean, can we not require that?
We do require. When people rent our facility, they have to have a certificate of insurance, and we have to have it on file before they ever step foot on the field at any of our rental, uh, weekend tournaments.
Thank you, Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Okay, we, um, I think one person, another person wanted to speak.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Michael Barrett, uh, 507 Dogwood South Lane, Horton, Louisiana. I also am, you know, here on behalf to speak against the, uh, the use of additional funds for Tinsley as long as Tinsley remains unavailable, um, to the local taxpayers and citizens. Sounds to me like Tinsley Park is not actually a park, it's actually a for-profit venture for the city. They're only allowing access to that facility, um, on the weekends to out-of-town guests. Um, I've really, you know, sat back there and, and, and kinda gotten frustrated as we continue to, you know, to bash travel ball, I think there's a misnomer as to what tournament ball actually is. It is affordable for the vast majority of publics, or citizens in this community, there's a large number of citizens within Bossier Parish that participate, a large number of teams. Another gentleman brought up to the point with, he'd like to know how many teams from this area actually participate in tournaments out there. Um, from talking to a lot of coaches and stuff, they elect not to participate out there due to their frustrations in dealing with the city as it relates to allowing them to have practices, not just there, but in Bossier, you know, city in general. We have contacted on multiple occasions both the administrators who are in charge of Bossier Little League and Bossier Dixie, um, and, and they have made it very difficult for us to even rent those facilities from them and use those facilities, which I find frustrating is how we allowing non-city employees to dictate who has access to city facilities. Um, and that's kinda where we're at on that. Every time we've reached out to them, they've got certain stipulations that you must reach in order for us to use those facilities. I think we're making a, you know, a mountain out of a molehill as it relates to, you know, us, it's simple, as you mentioned earlier, that we should be able to just simply go out to a website and reserve that field. By reserving that field, you know exactly who was on it, who's the contact person, how to get ahold of that person, then you can charge them, so you can control, it's not opening the floodgates and whoever shows up first gets access to it. As it relates to insurance, every travel team and, or tournament team, in order for us to participate in any event, we must maintain insurance, so every organization has an insurance policy in place. So, it could simply be amended to, to reference Bossier City on there if we were to be able to use those facilities for practice. Um, I mean, I, I've also had a personal experience to where you show up on a Sunday at Walbrook to practice in November, and then someone walks over to you and asks you to leave because you're not a member of that local league, and I'm like, this is a public park. If I was to go at the Field of Dreams Park over at Bossier Little League and take my son out there and let him run around the playground, is someone gonna walk up to me and ask me to leave because I'm not a member of whatever parks associated with that? No, if I was over and, and playing basketball on any one of the parks that we have here in town to play basketball, we wouldn't be asked to leave. So, thank you so much for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Okay, um, I, I know the mayor stepped out, but I wanted to acknowledge the validity of what Mr. Hammond and Mr. Smith spoke about, and therefore, I think it would be incumbent upon the administration to get back with them on their recommendations and to come up with a creative way to, uh, respond to the taxpayers, because we represent taxpayers. And so, that being said, it's, it's necessary to, to get back to them. And I know the mayor stepped out, I would, would have said that to him, but he's, he's out. So, thank you so much.
Mr. President, could, could I make a motion that we continue this till October the eighteenth?
Well, yeah, we're, the vote is for the expansion of the parking lot, not for renting the field, so...
Yeah, on, on a...
I call for a vote.
All right, okay.
All right, we have a motion, Mr. Williams second, Mr. Maggio on this item, and we've had comments already.
Back.
Okay. Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds for improvements to the lateral B1 drainage canal for a total of one million dollars to come from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund and to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Nixon Engineering Solutions and CEA with the Bossier Parish Levy Board, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Mr. Williams.
Motion, Mr. Williams second, Mr. Smith, and any comments? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the 2017 LCDA bond to purchase and install a new generator at Brookshire Grocery Arena and to cover all project cost, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and accepted by Mr. Williams second, uh, Mr. Smith, and do you have any discussion on this item?
Uh, I do. Is, um, this three hundred and fifty thousand for the generator, I, I know it's needed. Um, the new twelve dollar fee to park down there, is that fee gonna go towards recouping any of the costs of this three hundred and fifty thou? Mr. Montgomery says every time we bring that up, that it's a quality of life, but we lose money on this every single year.
Actually, we're putting half of that money into the capital budget and half of that money goes into their budget. Is that right, Angela?
Mr. Hammond, did you need someone from the administration to speak on this item?
I guess not, they didn't get up, so that, that's fine.
Ms. Nottingham, would you like to come forward?
Um, and that was, the portion of that fee will be remitted back to the company that is implementing the system, and then, um, there will be half of it split between capital and half between operating expenses. So ultimately, yes, this could help offset some of those expenses like this.
Okay. Since, since we're on the subject talking about the, this is going with the arena, I, I would ask that this administration, um, instead of Brookshire's Arena just throwing out there the twelve dollar parking fee, that maybe the city puts something out too about something, since we do own the arena, um, and not strictly come from them.
The contract is actually with, um, the contract is with ASM Global, um, directly as the management group and not with the city, but we can definitely put something out.
I understand that, but taxpayers look at it as their money went to build that arena and the city owns it, they own it.
You're talking about getting on, on the news and stuff?
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not talking about getting on the news, just, I don't think anybody gets on the news anymore, it's most, mainly just social media.
She's, yeah, she's been on Kill, I think Kill Radio, she's got, she's got a, a list of appointments made.
Miss Bonner, yes, they're doing, they are doing a big push.
On Kill in the mornings?
They have done that, but they have, um, they have a, a press plan, uh, to get the information out, but you're requesting somebody from the city to, I guess in conjunction with that, do that, we can definitely arrange that.
Thank you.
And let me say, a portion of this twelve dollars goes to the company, so...
Yeah, that, that's what, that's what I was asking, if any of the fees that are collected down there, are they going back towards recouping some money?
Yeah, it's two dollars, two dollars goes to the company that owns the, the app and owns the...
Those five dollars is split, ten dollars is split.
Yeah, ten dollars goes to the arena.
Thank you, Ms. Nottingham. Any other discussion? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve change order three for the East Bank Fire Station project with an increase of a hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents for a total contract price of three million, twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and six cents, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, Mr. Smith second, Ms. Maggio, discussion.
Chief, are you getting close to opening that thing? I saw him down there blowing it off or something the other day.
We're doing punch list items, this is to fix a typographical error in the previous change order number three. If you look at the last item on that first page, the PCO one-three was inadvertently left off when the sum was done, we're not asking for any more money, the money was appropriated correctly, it's just a formality change in fixing change order number three. No additional days.
Has, has everything come in, Clinton, that we were waiting on?
I think we're waiting on the big kitchen equipment, lo- no, lockers came in, uh, they were finishing doors last week, um, but I think the ki- the big kitchen equipment's still the last item, but we, we're looking at getting some CO stuff done. Yeah, we, like, we were out there last week looking at everything. They're working on that. Is Bill still here? No. But the tower's still something else to be done, but that won't affect the occupancy of the actual fire station. It'll affect us moving in, because that's the only way we'll get the dispatch.
Long time, man.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment? Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare the completion of the airline water tank rehabilitation and painting project by Utility Service Company, Inc., including deductive change order number one in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and nineteen cents, and to amend ordinance twenty of 2021, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement the Water Capital and Contingency Fund, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and second, Mr. Williams, end of discussion.
Is, is, is there gonna be lights on that water tower? Or are there lights on the water ta- I drove by it last night and it, it, it wasn't lit up.
No, we, we don't have plans currently to, to light that one. Love to do it though, you want us to...
Well, I mean, all the others that we painted, aren't they all lit?
Uh, not all of them, the...
Just South Bossier and that one?
South Bossier's lit, no, they all, South Bossier, the one there at Cash Point and, um, the northeast tank, those are all lit.
I mean, I, I think they look good lit up at night.
I agree, we'll, we'll look into it, happy to get some...
Put me up with there with a flashlight, I'll just...
TBH Construction said they pay for it, the in-kind contribution to the city.
Yeah, yeah. It's not inexpensive, but it, because we have to mount those lights kinda close to the tank, but, um, I'll get on that, I, I'll, I'll get your number for that.
Or, 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 I mean, can we do it with it being kind of in the flight line right there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'll, I'll, I'll let you know.
And the floor is open for comments. Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to repeal ordinance seventy-one of 2018, first reading.
I recommend that we continue this item, uh, due to ongoing planning, uh, by the administration, and perhaps getting counsel input on the planning.
What date do you want to continue it to, Mr. Har...
The eighteenth of, uh, October.
October, okay.
I second that.
And, um, any comments?
For the record, Jeremy Hefner, uh, 4220 Riley Lane, apartment A-106, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71105. I'm the venue coordinator for the East Bank District and Plaza and the Bossier Arts Council.
Mr. Hefner, be- before you continue, I, I might wanna suggest to you, since it's going to be continued, and you may come back when it's added, and you can make your comments at that time, we're not gonna vote on it today.
Okay.
It's, it's going to be continued.
I'll save it for that day.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we have a motion and a second.
Yes, our motion and second to continue until October eighteenth.
Okay, please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of one officer to sergeant, one sergeant to lieutenant, and one lieutenant to captain, and the hiring of one police officer due to a resignation, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hammond and second, Mr. Smith, and I believe this is the, uh, initial or the first time the new chief, uh, has been at the council and likely him to come up, and, uh, you don't have to sell us on this, but we just wanna get you introduced, and you can make a comment if you will.
All right. Uh, evening, counsel, uh, what this is in reference to is some, uh, people that have retired in the past, it's just to hire one and then promote based off of those ranks. Uh, it's not adding anybody, it's just replacing, so...
Well, we just want to congratulate you on your promotion, and we look forward to your, uh, great insight in making Bossier greater than it is.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, sir.
Chief, do y'all, y'all have an academy that's about to, to graduate?
Yes, sir, they graduate, uh, the twenty-first of November, so they've got a little over...
So that is, there's seven more, seven more officers for the street?
There's six in there, we have three that are post-hired, are previously certified through other agencies, they'll be joining them, so we actually have nine coming to us at one time, but six in the main academy, three post-certified, so...
So that will help tremendously keeping the citizens of Bossier...
Yes, sir.
Even safer than we are right now.
Yes, sir. And we're trying to put more in there, uh, more post-certified, we have a couple of applications we're working on currently, um, and hopefully with this today, we'll be able to maybe add some more prior to...
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Good luck, chief.
Any comments? Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing replacing of an office manager one position with an accountant one position in the finance department, hiring an accountant one, and adjusting the salary for the existing accounting one, accountant one position, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, second, Ms. Maggio, discussion. Floor is open for comments. Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing replacing of an office manager one position with an accountant one position in the finance department, hiring an accountant one, and adjusting the salary for the existing accounting one, accountant one position, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, second, Ms. Maggio, discussion. Floor is open for comments. Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one traffic control lead technician for the traffic engineering... for the Traffic Engineering Division due to a resignation.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Hammond. Discussion. Floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a lab technician one for the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant and backfilling any position this creates. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, second it, Mr. Williams. Comments? And the floor is open for comments. Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for the Water Distribution Division in Public Utilities and Department and backfilling any position this may create. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith and second, Mr. Maggio. Discussion. Anyone would like to comment? Counsel, please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Reappoint Michael Vercher as a representative for the MPC Board of Adjustments to appointment effective November first, 2022, and expires October thirty-first, 2027.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith and second, Mr. Williams. Discussion. And comments. Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries.
We've been here a long time.
Approve parade permit fee waiver for marching for Jesus, October fourth, 2022.
So moved. Second. Oh, that beat me, too.
Okay, Mr. Hammond's made the motion, second, Mr. Smith.
No, Mr. Maggio.
Mr. Maggio. Okay, Mr. Maggio. I'm thinking about that. Anyway, um, any, any comments?
Counsel, this just fixes a typo from the last meeting.
Okay.
Yes, sir. This is something y'all had already voted on, but we missed the fee waiver part.
We just approved it last meeting, didn't we? We didn't, we didn't waive the fee.
Right.
He isn't listening, fellas.
That's okay. I just wanted to be clear. What, what, what's going on?
Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries.
An announcement, uh, Mr. Mayor's not here. I, I forget just about every time. I'm not forgetting today, but he's not here.
I'm supposed to remind you, too, Jeff.
There we go. But I wanted, I wanted to, uh, say on behalf of the council, uh, to appreciate the city deputy marshals. They are silent but solid. And they, they, they are, uh, very much involved in the, in the chamber when they are here. And we, we don't ever appreciate them, but we do appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Always being here and, and, and being so, uh, on watch and so, so present. Thank you so much.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, real quick, just to remind everybody, today's National Night Out, so a lot of communities have events going on. So meet with your neighbors and say hello.